But my neighbors were all, I said, "You just missed Sarah." Well.
Next year.
I'll call the meeting to order and we have the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we gotta make up for that minute.
And it's supposed to be good luck. I keep waiting.
Any day it's gonna get.
Any day my ship's coming in.
Okay, can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Huffman.
Here.
Mr. Shaker.
Here.
Ms. Dixon.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Seaworth.
Here.
And Ms. Noah.
Here.
Okay, do we have any items that we need to add to the agenda or delete? Okay, we'll follow the agenda then as has been sent out to us. And we have the minutes from November the 16th. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, motion to approve?
I said move.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't have anyone signed up to speak. General comments, period. We do have three matters for public hearing that we'll consider. The first one at this time. The first application is for a special use permit to operate the lodging house at 109 Mechanic. The tax map number is 42A4A34. This is in the high-density residential R3 district. And it's from John Holtzman, and Wendy is here. Uh, we have a lodging house definition and the recommended conditions that are the usual ones that we have for applications of this type. We have all of the information, the application for the special use permit, a copy of the real estate information, and a copy of the public hearing that was published in the Page News in Cooyah. Any additional information that we need?
No, sir. Uh, no, uh, no phone calls or, or anything else regarding any concern.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. And we'd like to...
Um, we've actually spent the last probably seven months living at the, at the property. Um, it's a smaller home. It's about a thousand square feet. I have my, had my time with, with tiny living. We've since purchased a property up on Rossar Drive and it moved up there as our new primary residence. We originally bought this house to become an Airbnb. You guys are familiar, I know. But we spent a lot of heart and soul and effort into kind of revamping the, the little block there and really go into the bricks. And revenue went to the, to the area.
Did we consider another one right along that stretch just recently, too? Which, what, which number was that, Steve? Thirty-five?
Well, the, uh...
We have 314 as well.
Oh, 314. Okay.
And we also have 108, which will eventually... We've done the outside. We're working on this.
It's a great rehab for that area. It really does look nice.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little biased.
That's fine.
I see Mechanic Street's a little sketchy and like I live...
You know, it, it's, we're, we're trying to lead out the, the rip route.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the commission members? Okay, we're ready for a motion.
I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the special use permit to operate a lodging house at 109 Mechanic Street, tax map as indicated, in the high-density residential R3 district by John Holtzman with the conditions noted as presented.
I'll second.
Can we roll call, please?
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth?
Yes.
Ms. Noah?
Yes.
And Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Thank you. The second item for public hearing is a request from, also a special use permit application for signs as provided for in Article 8, in Chapter 802.4. And this is from D.R. Horton. They're requesting a special exception to install seven onsite and offsite signs that are prohibited by the code, but there is a special exception that can be granted by the town council through the special use permit process if the conditions of the request are deemed proper. The requested signage is identified and we have a map that, that shows where they would be. The recommended conditions for this special use permit would be one, that it is not transferable and shall not convey with any parcels sold to a new owner after the permit issuance. The special use permit shall automatically expire for all remaining unsold parcels upon the earlier of one year from the permit issuance or when eighty percent of the subject parcels have been conveyed to new owners. All signs and components shall be maintained in good repair in a safe, clean, and attractive condition. Any sign whose condition does not meet the foregoing requirements shall be replaced by the applicant within ten days of receiving notice from the town. Number four, except as expressly modified herein, all provisions of Article 8 of Appendix A of the Town Code shall apply and remain in effect. Okay, we do have the application and a number of pages to show where these signs would be located and how they would book. We have an aerial map that shows again the locations. And the notice of public hearing was included in the, the notices in the Page News in Cooyah. And we also have a letter from Tracy Jennings and Kelly Lucas with D.R. Horton. They regret not being able to be here this evening, but they have codes and thought it would be best not to show up here at the meeting. Okay, I'll officially open the public hearing so we can do that part, and there is no one here signed up to speak on that. So I'll close the public hearing and then open it for discussion or questions from the commission members.
So just for clarification, these signs are already up?
That was going to be my question.
Majority of them, yes, ma'am. I believe there's one sign, uh, the, the large sign that they had planned to put in front of the model. I don't know if that is up, but, but all the other signs, yes, ma'am.
So you just put up signs and then hope we'll agree? Is that, is that how this is gonna work? And, and my question is, how, what's the mechanism of the eighty percent occupancy? How do, how do you determine that? Is it relying on information from them, or is it from the town knowing that eighty percent has been sold? I mean, how, how would we know?
Well, um, the, the town works with the county to, uh, uh, issue COs, and the COs have typically been applied for at the time of sale. So we have a very good understanding of the number of, of units that have been sold. We also working with the planning commission and town council know that there are another eighty to a hundred that we have recently approved in this area that, um, once they start construction, that would again, uh, equate to the, the eighty percent. If there's no further construction with only eight units remaining, that would trigger the eighty percent. But we, we are, we are working with D.R. Horton to continue the construction of towns. If we receive zoning permits for those, that would again trigger the eighty percent for the signs to, to remain in effect.
On-site, they can have, they can have signage on-site anyway, right? Without a special use permit?
They can have, any, any lot in town can have up to three, four sale signs, signs. The signs that they're looking to have in front of a few of those buildings exceed the size required, most all of the signs that they are requesting, exceed our standalone size requirements. That's part of why they are, um, not conforming to the Town Code and they're requesting the exception.
I know last time we were discussing it, I had specifically asked, had we ever made the exception before? And the answer was no, except for the sign that's on Walmart.
Correct.
So, um, if we've not approved it before, I, I guess I'm just a little worried about setting a precedence. Uh, and could, if, if we wanted to, could we say, okay, we approve the, um, out-of-size for the ones that are on-site, but no signage off-site?
That is within the purview of the planning commission.
The signs that are up now are...
They're, they're basically all up. All they're at, it's, yeah, asking for forgiveness.
No, I don't, I don't like that. I don't like that. That rubs me the wrong way. I'm like, why put it up and then ask for forgiv...? I mean, I, I get it. I mean, I would probably do the same thing, but, hmm, you know, it's always easier to ask for forgiveness. But when you're coming before a board, I think you should probably be here to, to justify this, honestly.
And I, I do believe that they intended to be here.
They should have been.
I think there are a number of...
Zoom in.
You know, I think about some of the off-street businesses we have here in Luray. I think they deserve, uh, sandwich signs or something, and here's someone coming in. To me, the signs are overbearing. They're too large. And, uh, what was the number? Twelve?
Seven.
Eight to seven or eight.
Seven signs in and around.
They have some coming up to eleven, too.
Those are in the VDOT right of way, and they have been removed by, by, by VDOT.
One out here to...
VDOT's not...
Yes, there's a couple near the...
...in their consideration towards, um, an exception.
I mean, are, are signs there... I mean, I, I don't see that as a mechanism to sell the property.
That's not to bring the interest rate down.
To sell the property. I, I just don't quite get the...
I don't mind.
The ask. I don't, I mean, I've driven by that. I really don't mind them, but I, I just have an issue with the going against what we've already established as sign regulations that we've worked hard on.
I think they're too many and too large.
They, they don't bother me. May, maybe I see it differently, but, uh, we, we approved the subdivision of these lots to put a hundred and ninety-nine townhouses out there. And I think they should have every opportunity to sell those. And, and it's in a res, I mean, it's in a business, it's in a business area with, with Walmart and McDonald's and the new ABC store and, you know, to me, it's, it doesn't bother me.
Kinda in both. The subdivision continues.
Up there with the sign that right there, right? The one way up there?
Actually, that's still in the business. That's, that's a, a business zone.
Back, back there on Cave Hill Road.
I, I'm okay with the signage that's on-site. I just, I think off-site, you're setting, setting a precedence.
Which, which ones would be off-site?
Uh, the ones that are off-site would be these signs right in this area.
Which is the really big one right there, heading into Walmart.
The smaller directionals. Technically, this is not, this is a commercial property owned by Baker, right here. So technically, it is off-site, but it's somewhat connected to the planned neighborhood, uh, as is the, the sign up at Cave Hill. That's, this property's also owned by Baker.
I don't like that. It, it just, no. For all the sign issues I have to deal with, that we have to deal with the cave, I mean, that wouldn't fly.
You'd rather have it on-site than...
Well, I just think it needs to conform to whatever the, the, what we've got and not be outside of the, you know, outside of what we already have established, to me. I, I don't mind them. Honestly, I don't mind them, but I just feel like we're setting a precedent. Like Tracy said, and that would be a bad thing to me.
I feel the same way.
I want them to sell them all, but...
Yeah.
I, I, not, not, not against that at all, but I, I want them to sell them all, but that, that, that's troubling to me.
Well, if, if the commission would allow, I would recommend proceeding with the, the motion in the positive. That way, that gives the members the ability to vote in the negative if you feel that way.
Could you like have a compromise or something like that?
I'm sorry?
I don't like that either, Steve. I don't like us approving something to send to the town council that we don't feel is...
Well, no, no. You would make the recommendation, but then you could vote no against that. And then that way, there would be a, um, I, the only reason I bring that up is that some folks feel a need to say, "I propose that we not recommend." And then that typically causes problems because for the other members of, "If I vote yes, am I voting no?" Or if I, if I vote no, am I voting yes?
Move for something you don't believe in. I, I mean, somebody, and, and if anybody is, agrees with, with the motion, go ahead and make it. But why would you move if, if it's something you don't agree with?
I, I won't. I would not move to support that.
Well, maybe some bug does want...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, feel free to, to come forward.
The only point I'm making is that council is, well, the, we are, the planning commission is required to provide some kind of recommendation. And, and again, voting no on the positive
I got you.
is a little easier to convey than voting yes on the negative.
I, I, I kind of get you, but...
Just making the motion doesn't mean you support it. You're simply
I understand.
putting it out there so that the, the full commission can make that vote.
I got you.
That would be the town council would come up with, uh, say like, uh, okay, since you jumped a gun, maybe take them down for thirty days, then you can put them back up.
Now, alternatively, you could modify the motion to be, um, I recommend council consider the special exception for only the on-site signs if that is more, um, in, in, in where you're, you're, you're comfortable with. Or something along what Mr. Seaworth was, was saying.
So how many would, would there be for just the on-site?
Well, that gets, uh, definitely the ones that are in front of their, um, model home.
Mm-hmm.
This gets into, technically, these are off-site, but they are on the property of the planned neighborhood. So I guess that's where I would need a little more clarification from the commission of, "Do you guys consider that, would you guys consider that to be acceptable?"
Owned by the same people?
It is owned by Baker. It is not owned by D.R. Horton.
So the answer would be no. It's not owned by the same people.
It's not owned by the same people, but it's part of the same planned subdivision.
Well, I, I like the signs in front of the model. I mean, that's where they need it most. And, uh, so we wouldn't take that, um, sign on the way to Walmart down...
That's also an offset, off-site sign. So if, if the recommendation was only for approval of the on-site, then everything over here, all of these signs would not be recommended to, to remain. It would only be these signs.
Why do they have two right there, um, going into the property of the, the...
Liquor store.
No, this one...
Well, these are, uh, feather flags right here. There's four feather flags. And there's a double-sided sign that basically says, uh, Luray Landing this way, that leading into the...
The one zone.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Okay, this is the large, um, the, the large, uh, sign for D.R. Horton. And this is a Luray Landing directional sign to, to take you back to Allison Drive.
Just when I saw that one, which I assumed was on state property as well, that they didn't know any more than you can't put a sign on property that's owned by the state of Virginia. At least I saw one, I think. There were several.
There were many, and I was surprised, too.
Can the chair make a motion? I mean, you seem to be in favor. I guess that's, I don't know if that's proper in Robert's rules.
I, I, I'd rather not. I, I vote, but...
Yeah.
Don't usually make a motion.
Well, I would make a motion that, that stated that we would allow the ones that are on the, on-site signage. But does that even need to, is that not proper already?
Well, they exceed the, the size.
Exceed the size.
That's, that, they're still seeking an exception for that because they are too large to be permitted under our current regulation for on-site signage.
Well, if I word it properly, make a motion that they remain on-site as long as they're the proper size as stated in the code.
Well, I think I would even be okay, and, and I, I mean, you make whatever motion you want.
Yeah, no.
But, but make the exception for the on-site ones that are there already, but going forward, they have to be conforming in size for, for on-site. I, I mean, if, if we're gonna try to meet that compromise, I think you were saying, is that a, is that a compromise? Is that, would that be an appropriate compromise? With those on-site defined by the, it's on-site being property owned by D.R. Horton, not Baker Development. But, but that only, the exception is only for the existing signs if, if we do that.
If, if that were the case, then with the, the suggested motion in the second line, request for a special exemption, exception for, rather than seven signs in and around, it would just be four on-site existing signs in the Luray Landing subdivision.
And that would, that would ensure that the exception does not carry forward for any new signage that they put on-site?
Well, can we add the one going on to, uh, going to Walmart?
That...
That's off-site, so that doesn't...
Well, but it, it's a good place for this, for a sign for that.
There's a lot of good places for signs, so you just can't put them there.
But see, that's what opens up, that's what says the precedence that, and that's, that's my biggest concern. All right. Let me see if I can muddle my way through that whisper in my ear, Brian, when I... Well, and y'all don't have to agree. It's not gonna hurt my feelings. That's fine. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the special use permit requests from D.R. Horton for a special exception for the existing on-site signs for the property of Luray Landing subdivision with the identified conditions as provided by the Town Code, Chapter 802.4, as presented. Did I catch it all?
Yes, ma'am.
And that would be only property owned by D.R. Horton and not Baker Development. Okay.
I'll second that.
Other discussion or...
But you don't wanna add that, add the...
No, because that's still setting the precedent.
Yeah, but it's such a good place.
It's off-site, and we've, we've denied others.
We're already, we're already allowing something that isn't allowed.
Yeah, yeah, we're, this is a compromise.
It's due now and ask forgiveness later.
So then the only thing that would be remaining is the Ford is inside it right there, the model. So the rest are gonna have to come down, correct? Is that what we said?
Well, the, I mean, well, we just send this to the council and what they say.
I'm saying that that's...
That's a recommendation.
Our recommendation, okay.
Do you all have access to the, the agenda stuff online? Because it, there's a, a listing of each sign and the, the measurement.
Oh, yeah, we've got, yeah. Oh, yeah, we've got, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Uh, yes, but reluctantly.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Seawood?
Yes.
Ms. Noah?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
No.
And Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
You don't want to even sign?
I think they should conform. I mean, I, I just think they should conform to what the law is.
I feel this will come back.
I think it will.
Okay.
The town council can figure it out.
Okay, the third matter for a public hearing is we requested to have a public hearing to receive citizen input for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at fourteen Brumback Avenue. And the tax map is number forty-two A twelve eight four. This is Zoned Residential R three. And again, we have the definition for a lodging house and standard recommended conditions. And all of the information, the special use permit, the tax map info. And of course, it was advertised for a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. We do not have anybody signed up, so I will close the public hearing. Any, uh, any other information?
No, sir.
We can see from the information that this is a, a much larger house than some of the ones that we have considered for a lodging house or a short-term rental. Um, this has ten rooms, four bedrooms, two full baths. Built in nineteen thirty-three. It's on a pretty good-sized lot. Any questions or discussion? Fourteen Brumback Avenue. Okay, any other information?
I remove that the planning commission recommend approval of the special use permit to operate a lodging house of fourteen Brumback Avenue, tax map included, in the high-density residential R three district by Valley Corners LLC, with the conditions noted as presented.
Sir, second. Any other roll call, please?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Seawood?
Yeah.
Ms. Noah?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Good?
Okay, that concludes the public hearing, since we had advertised for this meeting. We have two other matters to discuss. One, we discussed a little bit, uh, last month. And we've been requested by the town council to consider a code amendment to establish Code five eighteen, which would deal with commercial vehicles in residential zones. We have a section of the code that has been rewritten. Section fifty-eight dash five.
Yes, sir. Uh, during the planning commission's discussion at the last meeting of, of concerns about prohibition of, of the vehicles in certain residential districts, uh, staff worked with the town attorney to, rather than implement a zoning, uh, charge, we looked at updating the town's, uh, noise ordinance. Uh, the main, uh, item of, of, of interest would be the section on what used to be D, but is now B C under the, um, the town attorney took it upon himself to do some additional proposed edits to the, the noise ordinance. But the, the meat of what, um, the, uh, of the previous discussion had been would be that vehicle operation that's audible beyond the property line would be a, a prohibited act between ten P M. and six A M. An explicitly prohibited, uh, noise that our, our police department could enforce if they were to respond and can confirm that there was loud noises that were exceeding the property line. And if, if the commission feels that it's, they're more comfortable with a, a noise ordinance rather than a, a zoning prohibition, then we believe that this would fulfill the concern about the, the vehicle noise, but still allow the property use as, uh, people would, would see fit.
Are we doing all this for one vehicle complaint? Is this what?
Well, there are actually multiple residents that, that complained. I did confirm that with the, the police chief that, uh, and honestly, it wasn't the individual that the owner had cited. There were a, a few others in the neighborhood that had reported the, the noise. And honestly, it, it, it would, this, this solution would be, would allow our, our police department to have an explicit code to, to fall on if there is a, a loud noise, uh, in the, the evening hours. Currently, because it is not explicitly included in the code, it's difficult for them to write a citation, uh, for a noise violation. If we include it explicitly, it, it gives them that ability.
What is the penalty? What could they write for it?
Uh, it's a, I believe it's a class four misdemeanor.
Class two.
Class two, sorry.
Well, wait a minute. Violation of this section shall be a class three misdemeanor. A second violation.
Class two.
Within a twelve months shall be a class two misdemeanor.
And what does that mean to me?
Well, there's potential for a, a misdemeanor fine. I, I would assume that it's five hundred dollars. Again, um, it, it simply gives the officer the ability to address the situation if the individual that's making the, the violation doesn't come into compliance, it gives the, the officer the ability to say, if you don't cut the engine off, we will have to cite you.
So back to Bill's question, though. So I, I think what Bill asked was all of this for, for one vehicle, and then you mentioned there were several complainants. But it's still the one vehicle?
It was, but, uh, that's not to say that there won't be other incidents of, um, individuals doing work or, or waking residents up in the middle of the night. It also goes, and thankfully, the town attorney did go through and, and updated for another, uh, a, a number of other issues to make it hopefully simpler and more concise for our, our officers to proceed.
And they think the, uh, the siren for the, you know, fire department is, is exempted in this? I mean, if we're gonna go there for sound ordinances, I mean.
Fire and test alarms, um, are, uh, are considered, um, exempted. Inexempted, uh, noise.
Is ten P M. like a standard time that would be used? I mean, seems like nine P M. would be more appropriate.
Historically, the, the, the.
That's what I gotta bet.
For quite a while.
I mean, most anybody doing fireworks is finished by ten, but.
I'm glad Richard still is in existence.
But again, uh.
Is there anything we need to do tonight, or just concern?
Yeah, because we presented this to y'all tonight, we, I, I wasn't looking for y'all to, to take action. If, if you're comfortable with this, um, at your January meeting, there'd simply be a recommendation to not pursue the, the zoning amendment, but to pursue, uh, an amendment to Chapter fifty-eight dash five.
Okay, any other discussion at this time? Okay, and the last item in that section is also one for discussion for tonight. And that is a request from, or request to operate a bed and breakfast at two thirty-three Mimsland Lane. And we have the tax map information. Uh, this is in residential R two. Uh, we have the definition for a bed and breakfast home and the conditions that would be applied if this were to be approved. And as usual, we have the application and the tax map information. Again, a rather large home, um, that would seem appropriate for a bed and breakfast, uh, twelve rooms, four bedrooms, two full baths and one half bath. Built in eighteen ninety-three. Any questions or discussion?
Is it currently being operated as?
No, it was actually a private residence, um, and was recently purchased by the, the Mimsland Inn, similar to the, the the home at, uh, two twenty-eight. And they're simply looking to incorporate that into the, the available facilities at the Mimsland.
All right, again, any other questions or discussion on this item that will come back to us in January? Any further comments from the commission members? I noted at the town council meeting on Monday that all of our commissioners were reappointed. It's a good day. Commissioner Dixon, Huffman, Schaefer, and myself. So the team stays together.
Long live.
Two more years.
Okay, um, our next meeting, I think, is January the eleventh. Any, any updates or?
Uh, just, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope y'all have a safe holiday and look forward to seeing y'all back in January.
Thanks, yeah.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Yes, sir. Um, the, the dinner is still a go. If the parade is delayed until Friday, there might be a, uh, a time delay in the start of the, the meal to allow all of the town employees that are participating in, in, and in and around the parade to get everything straight away and, and back to the Mimsland, so. We will be making the call, um, whether or not the parade is delayed by about noon tomorrow, and we'll put that word out to everyone in the community.
Okay, uh, nothing else, and we've completed our agenda, so we are adjourned.